Called to meet and order and thank everyone for their attendance tonight. We have a good meeting, we'll have a good meeting and look forward to it. As I ask for Reverend Ralph Rowley, Pastor of Virginia Beach and I Methodist Church, to come forward for the invocation, Pastor Reverend, I'd ask before you do the invocation that we have a moment of silence in honor and remembrance of former Mayor Myra O'Bendorf, who we had to lay to rest yesterday. But if everyone can stand up for the invocation and the moment of silence and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. A moment of silence to remember Myra O'Bendorf, please.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we pause this evening to give you thanks for the blessings of this day, for the beauty of your creation, for family and friends, for the comforts of home, for health and food, and for this place that we are privileged to call home. We ask your blessing upon our nation, upon the Commonwealth of Virginia and the city of Virginia Beach. Bless especially our mayor and the members of this city council and their city staff as they gather this evening. Guide them in their deliberations and in their decision-making. Enable them to discharge their duties with integrity and purpose and with fairness toward all. Give them wisdom and courage to make those decisions that would remove the barriers that create division, that would give encouragement to the poor and the disadvantaged, that would provide a bright and promising future for our children and youth, and that would contribute to the well-being of all. Unite us as neighbors and citizens of this great city in the common pursuit of building a community where fear and hatred are strangers, where peace and justice walk hand in hand, where all may reach their full potential, and where all may enjoy the blessings of your creation. Finally, oh God, we pause tonight in solemn remembrance and thanksgiving for the life of Myra O'Bendorf. We give thanks for her life of public service to this community as a member of the Public Library Board, a member of the city council, and as Vice Mayor and Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach. We give you thanks for her contributions to our community and for that part of her that will live on in the lives of those she touched. Bless her family and all who share their grief this evening. Give to them and to us all that peace that is yours alone to give. May her life of public service continue to inspire us all to work for the common good and to fulfill the holy purpose for which each of us was created. And now, Lord, bless this gathering that your will may be done in and through us and when necessary in spite of us. All this we pray in your most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend. Appreciate you coming down. Very nice of you. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session? So moved. Any discussion, I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the motion for reset, certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion for reset.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of March 3, 2015? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the minutes.
I will now go to a public hearing on leases of city-owned property, 1409 Old Virginia Beach Road.
Barbara Messner, she wants to speak on A, B, and C.
Okay. Barbara? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I did research on this because it was on the agenda about a month ago. We had to wait a month. Okay.
We had to wait a month because of foul weather. Thank you.
I assure you, I'm aware of the weather.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Attorneys, City Attorneys. You are planning to approve the lease of residential homes in the most dangerous crash zones in our city. The city purchased these homes and properties in order to lessen the potential for human loss if a jet crashed shortly after takeoff or on their landing descent. Takeoff and landings are the most dangerous times. The Navy didn't pay all of the acquisition costs. Taxpayers had to foot about half of the costs. The city also parks a large number of Virginia Beach school buses in this area. Your excessive need for more and more hotels and more and more tourists are at the expense of taxpayers and the Navy. Taxpayers also pay for the Navy. Taxpayer funds for the proposed entertainment facility will be coming from state education funds and federal transportation funds as per the PPEA, Virginia Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002. Are all members of council and the city attorneys aware that these three properties in the high noise and high potential crash zones? The Virginia Beach Boulevard property would be used as affordable housing. One, Louisa Drive property, is planned for males with DUI and substance abuse issues. This is unfair to the existing residents in this long-established residential and small business community. The BRAC and city funds used to buy these properties were done to limit having people housed in high noise and crash zones. And I don't know if the videographer can show this map. This is Oceana down here. This is where the jet crashed into Mayfair Mews. And this is Oceana Gardens. And this is near Virginia Beach Boulevard, Old Virginia Beach Boulevard, where you're planning to lease, sublease these properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open a public hearing on acquisition of right-of-way for Indian River and Kempstville Roads intersection in Wichita Road Phase 2.
For Indian River, the first speaker is Peggy Sandstone.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Essentially, I'm here for the Lake James Homeowners Association. We are not in opposition. We are in favor of the intersection project at Indian River Road. But we have two concerns. I will address one, and there'll be another speaker following me on our second concern. My concern has to do with the status of the stormwater management project for this intersection. We have not been updated on that status in over six months. And I came here this evening representing the community just to get an update, if you can provide that at this time.
I don't think we can at this time. We can have someone come meet with you all. And Mr. Spoor, we'd make a note to get someone up to Lake Shane Civic League, did you say?
Excellent.
Very good.
Very much appreciate it.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Lawrence Stamp.
We welcome you today, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and honored members of the council. Lawrence Stamp is my name, Lake James Homes Association, and we are in favor of the acquisition for the Kempstville Indian River Road intersection. And our concern also is during this project, there will be rerouting of traffic to avoid that intersection. A significant portion will probably be routed through Lake James. So we would ask that the traffic engineer provide us with a little more detailed plan on what in fact that is going to happen.
I tell you what we'll do. When we have the stormwater management people there, we'll have the traffic management people there, too.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
I'll call the speaker.
Okay, I have someone under opposition.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right. Jim Pickrell. Apologize.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. I'm Jim Pickrell Jr., attorney for John and Rita Ninos. This is on the Wichita Road improvements, not the Indian River Road improvements. I have some just short written comments if I may pass out to the council members.
Absolutely.
May I get one for the Madam Clerk?
Please.
Mr. and Ms. Ninos are residents of the city of Virginia Beach, and they own 5101 Virginia Beach Boulevard located in Virginia Beach. They bought the property in 1988. This is the property all in red. I don't know if y'all can see it on this side or not. Property's located at the corner of Wichita and Virginia Beach Boulevard. The property since 1992 has been continuously leased to a Raleigh's Restaurant. Twenty-three years it's been leased with no vacancies whatsoever. Property contains about 34,500 square feet. The city needs approximately 3,826 square feet to widen Wichita Road. That is the area shown in yellow. And that's also on your plat that I have given to you. The acquisition goes through a small portion of the Raleigh's building, which is located on the site. This is the Raleigh's building located at the corner of the property. This is the acquisition, and it touches about two feet of the building. So as part of the city's acquisition, the building does have to be removed. After the acquisition, this part's taken off, there will remain 30,588 square feet of property. The property is zone B2. Your minimum lot area for B2 zoning is 20,000 square feet. The property will continue to have entrances, both an access to Wichita Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard, and in all respects, it is compliant with the BT zoning. We have no problem with this acquisition of the land that is needed, and we also recognize that the building has to be demolished by the city as far as this acquisition goes. The problem is, and for over three years, we have requested the city not to take the whole property, but the city has given us an offer, this is their plat, to acquire the whole parcel of property even though only this portion is needed. The resolution before you tonight is to authorize the city to acquire the whole property, just not that which is needed. There's no necessity for the remainder of the property.
We thank you very much. What we will do, as you know, this will come back to the council. I ask that you continue to negotiate with the city, and we will deal with it when they bring it to the council.
Okay, we are continuing to negotiate. As far as, if I may, the ordinance that you pass tonight, I would just ask that this property be removed from that ordinance because the city is negotiating with us, but the minute you authorize them to take the whole, because they are negotiating with us just to acquire what they need, and that's what we're asking, is that at this time, they just acquire what they need with no ordinance authorizing the taking of the whole property.
Yes, Mr. Moss.
During the informal session, the council as a whole communicated and shared our concern with the city manager and city attorney before they exercised any condemnation in this kind of regard that they would come back and let us know. So I really do believe in the end that we will find a common ground to come to. I can't make promises, but I think we will.
Keep on negotiating.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Thank you, Ms. Sessoms.
All right. Mr. Sillings.
Just for Mr. Styles, I thought that amendment that was voted on last year regarding acquisition or condemnation and, you know, the payment and so forth, that's required, that there was a stipulation that we can only acquire that which we need and cannot acquire more than what we need? Is that...
The state code does set forth when and the government may do a total take versus a strip take. I think the issue in this case is the fact that it touches the building, which would authorize the entire take. That doesn't mean that we can't work with them to negotiate some other resolution.
Mr. Pickrell, I'm sure by the time we get through with the negotiations, we'll find a way to accommodate you.
I appreciate it.
I think Mr. Pickrell will finish that day. Okay.
We have one other speaker.
Please.
Ron Shank.
Well, thank you. Glad to be here, I think. And pardon me, but I'm certainly not prepared as these other folks have come up here, but I own a piece of property, 294 North Wichita Road. It's family property, my media family. It's a little strip shopping center. It's my income. My wife has a business in there, it's her income. We have other tenants, and we've had this for 20 years. We built it, and we enjoy it. We are currently working with your city people and trying to go from a full take to a partial take. So I have to compliment your staff for that. We saw this notice in the paper, and we've tried to attend all these meetings.
Right.
The concern we have, and I'm certainly don't want to debate this whole project, but we're going to end up, even in the best of consideration, losing the in-and-out ability to have retail, which is our business, retail. So from full take to now a consideration of a partial take, but the caveat still is, we lose in-and-out from Wichita Road into our property. So therefore, the only way we can do business is a little street in the back called Jersey Avenue. And Jersey Avenue, if you're all familiar with it, is a mess. There's not a city sign on it that controls parking in-and-out. We've got a used car dealer that's, lives there and uses three blocks of it to park his used cars. It's just a big mess. But to lose in-and-out to our shopping center from Wichita Road is a real problem. We're working with them, we've asked them, considered. Wichita Road, you all know, at the end of the day, is a road that's going to pick up one lane. It's going to have a bigger median. The turn lane, which typically is 12-foot in this city, this turn lane's 14-feet. In front of the property, they're going to put a bicycle path, they're going to put a multi-use path, and every time you continue to encroach two feet, two feet, two feet, two feet, before you know it, there goes my parking. There's 3,500 feet from the interstate 264 to Virginia Beach Boulevard, 3,500 feet. There's 60,000 cars a day goes by there. I've had this property for 20 years, I've had studies done on it, and I assure you, it's a minimum 60,000. Who wants to ride a bicycle in that environment? And I've discussed this with the city, I've discussed it with some of the planners and so forth, and I'm told, well, there's a big push by the bicycle community to have bicycle paths, and I'm all about that, that's cool. But I don't know if anybody wants to ride a bicycle on a 3,500-foot piece of road that's got 60,000 cars a day going by. So that encroachment is not going to be used, it's ruining my business, and across the street happens to be the city of Virginia Beach's property that's vacant.
Right. Well, we thank you very much for coming down, and we certainly have taken note, and again, continue to negotiate with the city and hopefully we'll be resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Next speaker, please.
I'll call the speaker on that item, sir.
Thank you. I am going to go to polling place changes because there was one opposition, a person...
That's for the public hearing, yes. Mike Mitchell.
How are you? Welcome.
It's just been a while since I've been here, but I first want to recognize the Honorable Mayor Myra O'Bendorf. She's adorable. When I was little, she used to come to my parents' house, and my mom and dad was the one that got her here. And I wasn't aware that she had passed away. But in the meantime, it's good to see y'all. From my understanding, y'all had been addressed that some folks felt that the precinct where that I am a captain and run a poll at, and the Davis Corner has gotten rather large, and they want to break up the voting poll precincts and all that. It's really as bad a dump that they did the rezoning and made it in diners, Kempstville and Norfolk, so that they could get the Norfolk folks into office. My thing is that I am opposing that because you need really a good enough reason to allow these folks to make up these precinct voting polls. And because that I am a member and represent the Republican Party, and thank you very much, and I have been a voting poll captain since 2007, appointed by Lieutenant Governor Bill Boeing, and I would appreciate it if y'all would just think twice about allowing this to be a bunch of chaos, because that's exactly what it is.
Thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll let you go ahead with the consent, but I think you've got two add-ons first, I believe.
First, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we add to the agenda as item 13, a resolution to designate date March 26, 2015, the Day of Peace Monument Dedication. And item 14, a resolution to direct staff to take actions in furtherance of high-speed broadband internet.
I have a motion, do I have a second for that? Second. Discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've added on the two motions, go to two resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. If you'd move on now with the concerns in the first.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions. Item I-1, which is ordinances to amend the city code, A, Section 10, to add four polling precincts, Dam Neck, Hilltop, Independence, and Indian River, change two polling places, Edwin and Hillcrest, and a precinct boundary change, Davis Corner and Newtown. For deferral, it would be, item 1B, would be deferral for 30 days of the sections 25-6, 25-8, 25.14, Ray Dale reports to Chief Police, one, pawnbrokers, junk and secondhand dealers, and three, precious metal and gem dealers. For approval, ordinances, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute the lease of 2B, which is Transitions Community Development Corporation, at 213, 217 Louisa Avenue, and to defer to A, which is Mocha, at 2200 Parks Avenue. Item I-3, for approval, is ordinance to accept and authorize major design features and acquisition of temporary permanent easements either by agreement or condemnation. 3A is Indian River and Kempstville Roads intersection improvements. The clerk would please note that I have filed a disclosure on that item, and I will be abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item 3B is the, for approval, is Wichita Road Phase 2. Item 4 is ordinance to grant open-air cafe franchises, A, Alby's Pizza, B, Black Angus, C, Catch 31, D, Doughboys, E, Lagerhead's Cafe, F, Lagerhead's Cafe, G, Marriott Courtyard, H, Rockfish Cafe, and I, Chick's Cafe, and there's a small amendment on line 30 of the Chick's Cafe. Also, clerk, please note that Mayor Sessoms and Councilman Earn are abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
And that Mrs. Wilson has filed disclosures on C, E, and F. For approval, item I-5, which is resolutions to request VDOT accept urban maintenance payments for A, additional streets, and B, corrections and deletions to the road inventory. Six, Ray, the community policy and management team, A, city manager designated to serve as fiscal agent to administer CSA funds, and B, city auditor to annually audit the total revenues. Item seven is a resolution to name police marine vessels to memorialize fallen officers. Eight is a resolution to urge parents whose children are not fully immunized to proceed with vaccinations. Nine, ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions for a closing vacating and discontinuing a portion of Market Street, Town Center Block 9. Item 10 is a resolution, Ray, modification and extension of Town Center Option Agreement with the Development Authority. Clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item 11 is ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city property known as Main Street, Columbus Street, and Constitution Drive. 12 is an ordinance to appropriate and transfer to the sheriff, A, $1,262,100, Ray, the medical contract expenses, B, $564,000 annual in sick leave payouts, and C, $1,204,500 to special revenue fund, offset projected shortfall.
Open a public hearing. Oh, you're 13. Thank you, sir.
Item 13 is a resolution to designate March 26, 2015, as the Day of Peace Monument Dedication. And 14 is a resolution to direct staff to take actions in furtherance of high-speed broadband internet. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to do planning to, open a public hearing for planning?
All right. Item, under planning for consent, is ordinance to amend Sections 111, 230, 901, and 101 of the city zoning ordinance, and Section 5.2 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code, Ray, craft distilleries as a conditional use. That's for approval. Item 4 is the Chesapeake Bay Distillery LLC Hotline Enterprises for a conditional use permit at 437 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Beach District. And if the clerk would please note that Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item 5, for approval, is the Virginia Beach Development Authority, Ray, modification of proffers, number one and two at General Booth Boulevard and Corporate Landing Parkway in the Princess Anne District. Item 6, for approval, Pembroke Square Associates LLC for a conditional use permit, indoor commercial recreation bowling alley at 44554 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Bayside District. Item 7, for approval, Virginia Beach Boulevard LLC for a conditional use permit, motor vehicle repair at 245 Pennsylvania Avenue in the Bayside District. And item 8, for approval, is Take 5 Oil Change LLC, 1928 Laskin Road LLC for a conditional use permit, motor vehicle repair at 1928 Laskin Road in the Beach District. Clerk would please note that Mrs. Henley is voting no on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item 9...
And we need to talk about the... And we need to talk about the amendments he made to the Take 5.
And also that Mr. Earn has asked, included in that motion, that item 13 be modified to express a 20-year term, and also that it would eliminate item 14. Item 9, which is a variance to Section 4.4G of the subdivision regulations to allow subdivision lots, A, DH Investors, Robert S. Linsley Jr., executor of the estate of Edwin B. Linsley Jr. at 936 Linsley Drive in the Lynn Haven District, B, Richard S. and Judy L. Foster for approval at 3344 Eagle Nest Point in the Lynn Haven District. Item 10, for approval, NVR Inc., Mundon Farm LLC, Ray, modification of proffer number 3 at Mundon Farms Lane and Mundon Ridge Drive, Ray, lot size in the Princess Anne District. Item 11, for approval, Monarch Properties Inc. for a conditional change of zoning from R5D to conditional 01 at South Rosemont Road, Ray, a medical office in the Rose Hall District. And the clerk would please note that Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
And then for approval, item 12 is the application of Alexandria Place LLC for a conditional change of zoning from A12 to conditional A24 at 5700 Magnolia Chaseway, Ray, increased density in the Centerville District. Clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item.
Yes, sir.
So move, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion to have a second. Second, is there any discussion? Call for the question, please. I'm sorry, Barbara.
Yes, I would just like to make a comment on my reason for voting no to item 8, which is the Take 5 Oil Change out of Laskin Road. I note that the staff recommendation was for denial based on the fact that this is at a very significant location in the Hilltop SGA, and that the particular use is one that to an extent, great extent, does not conform with that plan. I read the transcript from the Planning Commission. They had a great deal of discussion about how to deal with items in the SGAs that do not conform with the plan. A lot of concern that there needs to be some interim procedures for dealing with items that perhaps don't quite make the ultimate, but maybe get there to some extent, recognizing that this one has pretty extreme variances from what the plan recommends. The Planning Commission added these two items, which are now being taken out as a way to get to that interim and allow some use in the meantime. I think all of this just really highlights our concern for our strategic growth area plans, which we have spent a lot of time and money on in the last several years. I really feel that if we're going to be able to get investors to invest in these plans in the fashion that we want them to, we're going to have to show some commitment to these plans. And I do feel that commitment, and for that reason, I am going to not vote for this change.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moss.
I'd like to explain my vote on item 10, under ordinances, which was to modify the extension to the Town Center Option Agreement. This is for Block 9 and Block 2. For both of those options, Amada Hoffler had an option which would have expired at the end of April. And for the purposes of that option, they were required to pay the taxes due, and the interest is on one of the lot, the mortgage is Development Authority held, for the purposes of having the exclusive rights to develop that parcel if they had submitted and if we had accepted a proposal to develop the property. We were notified that Amada Hoffler could not satisfy the terms of that agreement. They would in fact not submit to us a proposal to be approved by 30 April, and therefore the option that they were exercising would have expired. It was my opinion that we owed a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to determine the highest and best value of that property in the marketplace today, and we should have rebid and re-advertised. And no matter how close our relationship with Amada Hoffler has been, and maybe because of how close it has been and the appearance that it gives, we owed the public to go out and rebid that property for the highest and best use in today's market, and that's why I voted no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just like to explain my, why I abstained on item 3A. I own property very close to the Indian River Road and Kemsfield Road intersection, and the property might be impacted by the acquisition. While the city attorney advised me that conflict of interest act allows me to participate in the transaction as a member of a group, I chose not to vote and abstain.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? We'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now go to Crown Castle USA.
I'm sorry, sir. We have a speaker on the distillery. Even though it was on the consent, she wanted to speak.
Okay, she's got three minutes.
I'm sorry. Barbara Clark.
Barbara, glad to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms and members of City Council. My name is Barbara Clark, and I live on the north side of the 400 block of 16th Street. We share our rear property line with those of the commercial properties on the south side of the 400 block of Virginia Beach Boulevard, so I'm sure you can understand my personal concern regarding redevelopment efforts in this area. I am Secretary of the Resort Beach Civic League, and we are in support of this project with the conditions proposed by planning staff. We are excited about the rebirth of this area as a vibrant district supporting small, locally-owned artisan-type businesses offering unique and superior quality products. I know there is strong support for the arts and culture district concept being proposed for this area, and urge you to support that as well. We would like to thank the applicant, Chris Richardson, for taking the time to work so well with us to make this a truly successful project. And thank you to planning staff, especially Graham Owen, for making sure we were included in the early stages of the process. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Now we'll go to item 2 in planning, Crown Castle USA, relocation of a non-conforming structure. This was going to be on consent. I'll let the opposition speak first.
Well, no, I think the applicant needs to let you know what all of these concessions are.
Oh, I thought you were going to, all right, got it. We welcome you. You have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local attorney, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Crown Castle USA Inc., in connection with this application. I have with me tonight Marvin Greer, who's the project manager for Crown, who can address questions regarding construction scheduling, logistics, and the layout and design, et cetera. As your staff report indicates, we have really worked extensively on this application that started well before March of 2014, which was the first time that we actually met with the neighbors. As you may recall, this is something of a challenge. You've got agriculturally-zoned property. There you see it. There are four lots that are encumbered by approximately an acre easement that now houses a 285-foot guide tower and all of the equipment that that entails. And this shows you the tower itself. So the challenge is we've got an aging piece of critical wireless infrastructure that's been modified. The last set of modifications, as you may recall, were done in a manner that Crown is not comfortable with continuing to use this particular tower. This is the tower itself as it exists today. There are 11 users, a total of six wireless carriers and five other users. So virtually everybody wireless in the city, in this portion of the city, is actually located on this tower. So the challenge was, how do we take this existing piece of infrastructure and replace it in a manner that meets the requirements of relocating a non-conforming structure? And that is, we need to make it less non-conforming than what is there now. And originally, the proposal that you may recall was to build a self-supporting tower. So Crown's thought was, we'll get rid of the guide wires, we'll sort of narrow that footprint, give the folks back the use of some of that space, as you can see the easement encumbering the properties, and work within that sort of footprint. The concern there was that the self-supporting tower was going to be much wider than the existing tower. There were concerns about the placement and the location. And as you may recall, we were asked to sort of go back to the drawing board, try to come up with a design closer to what's there now, and a location that's further away from the homes that were built at the front of those lots. So in order to try to use the existing easement and to do exactly the same design, which is the guide wire design instead of the self-support design, we had to try to work within that existing easement. One of the options that we looked at was, well, if we go outside the easement, gain some additional area, we can replace the guide wires and work around the tower that's there now. And if you may recall, at the time, the thought was, leave the tower in place, leave the equipment on the air, and then once the new tower is built, move everything, because that would have been optimal for the folks who are actually using that tower. That proposal didn't work, and so Crown has come up with a proposal now and a plan that would involve a temporary monopole tower, which is fairly unusual. Most of the temporary towers that you see today are the crane truck towers, where they bring out a crane truck, and they put up the boom, and they've got antennas on it. This is actually a 200-foot monopole, there you go, replacement or temporary tower. And what this enables them to do is during the two to three months that it's going to take to remove the tower and build a new tower, the wireless carriers at least can continue to operate at some capacity, so folks in that part of the city aren't going to lose wireless service during the construction process. By coming up with a plan for this temporary structure, what that enabled them to do was to rebuild the guide tower either in place or in a new location. And in this case, originally, we suggested, well, rebuild it in the exact same location, because as you may recall, folks were generally okay with the location, they were okay with that design, the guide wires. Because we're going to be taking this tower down, we now have the ability to actually construct the replacement guide tower a little bit further away. So they've looked at the engineering. They can continue to use the same anchors that were in these locations, and they can move the tower back approximately 32 feet from the existing location. So we end up with the same design, the same layout. You've got the narrow tower, as you see here, as opposed to the much wider self-support tower. At the last meeting we had when we proposed this idea, the neighbors said, well, can we do something about the setback? Can we reduce the height of the tower? Can we pull it further away? So as I mentioned, not only were we able to pull the tower 32 feet further away, but we've also been able to reduce the height of the tower. So what's there now is 285 feet. Again, you can see it's fully loaded. We're able to reduce it to 270 feet. So again, you end up with the same design. All of the users would go back on the tower. The process of construction will take between two to three months, and they've got to put up the temporary tower, they've got to slowly take down the existing tower, and then rebuild the new one in its place. So this appears to be the best way to deal with this challenging situation of taking a piece of infrastructure that's been there 30 years and trying to rebuild it so that you've got a newer, better structure that's up to today's current standards and actually beyond. I'm happy to address any questions that you have about the application.
Thank you very much. It appears there might be some opposition, so you'll have the opportunity to come back and speak, okay?
First speaker is Darrell Riddle.
We welcome you today, sir.
We thank you for your service. Thank you. I own the home at 2233, which the tower is directly on my property. So I guess out of the community, I'm the one most affected. We've been going through this for a year now. One of the main things we've been pushing for is compliance. That's all we've asked. We've, you know, they've talked about moving it back. I know Sprint moved off the tower, evidently moved down 40 feet, but they only lowered the tower height 10 feet. We asked them to check with the other carriers to see if they would be in agreements to lower their height as well to try to get this tower height reduced. We just wanted to comply with the 125% setback that was put in place. And I just want to, I don't want to take up too much time, because the other speakers got to go, but in 2008, requirements for landscaping, screening, a setback equal to 125% of the height of the tower from any residential structure, et cetera, have been adopted in Section 232 of City Zoning Ordinance. The landscape screening was adopted to enhance the appearance of these sites. The setback from residential structures was adopted to protect the health, the safety, and welfare of persons within residential structure in the event of a catastrophic failure of a tower structure. That's all we're asking for, to comply. They're still not within that 125%. The tower could take out any of our homes. I've got a list of numerous towers that have fallen because of defects, maintenance, deconstruction, construction, and we got four or five homes within this distance to the tower. And they talk about they don't have to comply for some reason. I don't understand that. If I have a home that has a deck on it that's bad, and I've got to take that deck off and rebuild it, do I not have to comply with the current ordinance and codes? I do. I have to comply. Why do they feel they don't have to comply? We've been going through this for a year. A 200-foot tower, if that works temporarily, why doesn't it work permanently? Where are the other carriers going? 200 foot sounds good to me. 200 foot, push it back 30, another 20 feet, and we've got full compliance. They talked about the damage to their tower, the bad welds. I think we talked about it the last time, that was their own fault, they damaged their own tower. Code violations still exist out there. It existed from day one. I've got pipes out of the ground with danger signs on them that still exist from their carriers. I've got electrical code violations in the buildings that still exist, and I've had kids around this property, because it is actually in the middle of my property. My property surrounds that tower. In closing, all we ask is for compliance and for City Council to uphold and enforce the ordinances that they put in place to protect and assure the safety of its residents. No one, including Crown Castle, should be allowed to operate outside the laws and regulations of the city citizens.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have one question.
Mr. Moss.
You know, I've been out to your property, and we've walked around.
Yes, sir.
So is all that debris and stuff from the construction still out there on that lot?
They made a good effort, an honest effort, and I applaud them for that, and they cleaned up the majority of it. But they only cleaned up what I had pictures of. It's like they only hit those items. There's still concrete debris, rebar debris, center blocks, piles of gravel, ditches where stagnant water sits from the cranes that erected the first tower. It's all still there.
One last question, I couldn't remember. Have you resolved the access about the lock for the thing to get access to your property through that roadway?
Yes, we finally got that from the neighbor. They only gave it to one neighbor instead of all of us. So it was up to the neighbor to give us the rest of the community to tow. They wouldn't give it to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Did you purchase your home prior to the tower being built?
No, I purchased my home in 2011. Actually, I bought it kind of sight unseen. I was in Iraq at the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. We welcome you today, sir.
Thank you much. To answer your question.
Yes, sir.
The neighborhood was actually established on a platte back in 1952.
Yes, sir.
Before there were towers, just so everybody knows. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My statement is brief. My neighbors and I have been in, on again and off again, communications with Crown Castle for nearly a year now, over a year. During that timeline, we have changed the original design and placed another tower within our neighborhood several times. When we initially met in March 2014, our neighbor, Mr. Riddle, offered at no cost to provide an easement exchange between his property and Crown Castle coincidentally at our last council meeting in April 2014. The mayor asked Crown Castle to work with us towards a solution. The mayor directly spoke to Crown Castle and asked for a solution. The mayor directly spoke to Crown Castle and asked for a solution. During this time, City Councilwoman Henley, who I thank Ms. Henley very much, she has really worked with our neighborhood in trying to bring some cohesion to this issue that we're having with Crown Castle. Has worked closely with both parties to try and find an amicable solution that fits our needs for a compliant tower. Notice I said the word compliant tower that meets with newly established regulations. And Crown Castle's need to replace a non-compliant tower. Thus far, we have progressed in our discussions on what type of tower and its placement. However, we are still in disagreement with the height, 270 feet. We feel we can be reduced further by stringent conversations with their customers and additional setbacks. Per Mr. Riddle's email to Ms. Murphy on the 13th of March, if an additional 127 feet of reduction in tower height and setback is achieved, the new tower will be in compliance with city standards. After all, the temporary tower is 200 feet or less, and it services all their clients. What's wrong with 200 feet? As citizens of this fair city, we ask and implore the city council to delay its decision on Crown Castle's application. We implore you, delay your decision.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down. We welcome you, all right, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm here. Everybody's almost said mostly of what our community feels. We do thank you, Ms. Henley and Mr. Moss, for coming out to our neighborhoods, but we just feel like they need to be 100% in compliance. They need to conform, not less non-conforming. I mean, safety is ultimately our issue for all of your citizens. I mean, our tax dollars are at work trying to get everything straight in our city, and we would really beg you to help us out here, make them comply, bring it down, move it back. I mean, Mr. Riddle even offered to give them a whole easement in the back of this property, and they could have built the monstrosity tower that they wanted. And I guess they didn't want that. We've had a lot of communications issues with them where they don't get back to them. So we were just asking for a delay until they can really comply 100%. They can move it all the way back. Mr. Riddle's offering an equivalent swap of easement. So I don't know why they don't want to conform, why big business doesn't think it applies to them, when if I want to do something on my land, I've got to get the permit, I have to comply with city ordinance. So we ask you to please make them conform.
Thank you very much for coming.
Mr. Speaker.
Ms. Henley, want the representative to come back?
Yeah, I just wanted the representative to explain what their concerns. You know, what's your explanation just to give?
Sure. So a couple of factual issues that are incorrect. The temporary 200-foot tower, the only users that that can accommodate is the wireless users. So of the monopole that you saw, that's less than half of the users on the structure. The wireless users have a requirement that they have to continuously operate a site once they've got a site on the air. So in order for this to work, we've got to have a temporary structure for them. But at 200 feet, it just accommodates the wireless. The other users higher on the tower are not going to be able to operate during the construction period. So I wanted to clarify that. The reference was made to Sprint. Sprint is currently operating at 220 feet on the existing tower. They will be coming down to 220 feet, but that really doesn't affect what's going on at the top of the tower. So if you go back to the picture of the existing, the side-by-side of the two, there you go, this shows you the existing structure. So here's where the wireless carriers end, and then this is everybody else. And as you can imagine, each of those users is a tenant and has a lease in operation and is currently using their space. And we've addressed that, we've talked to the other users and are able to drop down, it really is 15 feet, so from the 285 that's there, down to 270 feet. The setback question, I just wanted to make one thing clear, and it's sort of a technical legal issue. The tower was, towers were compliant when they were built, right? So in the '80s, the requirement was a setback of 200 feet from an existing residential structure. So when the tower was built, there were no residential structures. In '95, when the conditional use permit was modified to allow for the construction of the homes, at that point in time, the homes were not existing, they came subsequently so that the setback didn't apply. However, as you may recall, the owner of the property and the holder of the rights to the tower recorded an easement that encumbered those lots. And that easement specifies that there won't be any more than three towers, that the towers won't be any closer to the homes than what was there now, that the guide wires wouldn't be any closer. So for all intents and purposes, with regard to, if you go back to the four lots, with regard to the four lots, the setback was really created by that easement, that, you know, once they allowed for the construction of the homes, they put that easement in place that encumbered all of those lots before those homes were built. So the, you know, if you think about the reason for the setback, it's not really a building code issue, it's not found in the building code, but the idea was, you know, we don't want to build towers but so close to existing homes. This is one of those weird cases where you've got, tower was built, there weren't any homes. In fact, there weren't any, you know, probably for quite a distance, and the homes were built around the tower. So that has added a bit to our challenge. The structure, the new structure will be designed to actually exceed current standards. The, believe it or not, the wind requirements have been reduced for the city of Virginia Beach in this particular location, but Crown is going to build it to the standards, the previous standards that were in place. 20 mile an hour gusts higher than what's required now. So we really have tried within the confines of the existing easement and the rights, the private property rights that were laid out with regard to the easement, when the, when the tower was modified or when the conditional use permit was modified. As far as the debris, just a couple of items to answer, Councilman Moss, the debris that you see in these pictures has been removed. Everything that was out there at the time of the last meeting, Crown went out, whether it was debris from the tower or debris from the old horse farm, they've taken it away, large concrete blocks. There was something that looked like a piece of exposed conduit. It actually ended up being an antenna that was buried underground. So they've gotten rid of most of that debris. There is a condition in the ordinance that you have in front of you that would require them to remove all the debris after construction, to fix the drainage issues, and replace the crush-and-run on the existing access road, and to generally leave the site in better condition than it is now. The other thing I'll give you, this is a letter from Sprint, who's one of the users on the tower, and it just highlights the importance of this particular tower in the network. Obviously, they've been operating antennas on there for a while, and if you were to have to replace this tower, you'd need several towers within a half-mile, quarter-mile of this particular location. So it is provided colocation, again, for 11 users, and by relocating it so that it's further away and it's shorter, in the same design, we feel as though we're meeting the requirements of the ordinance regarding non-conforming structures. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions? The councilors, gentlemen?
This question isn't, doesn't telegraph my vote, but it is to make the record as factually correct as possible. When your company acquired that property, where those homes there?
When, so Crown acquired the easement and the towers from Pinnacle, yes.
And I assume at the time you researched and knew the, next day for the easements and were understanding of the existing codes and the extent that you were not compliant with those codes at the time of acquisition?
Well, to back up, technically, the tower that's there right now is compliant. When you take it down and rebuild it, then you've got the homes that were not existing that are existing.
And that's what I'm asking, but you were aware that should you have to recapitalize the site, that the structure you now have would not be compliant with the code that then existed at the time of purchase?
I don't know that they did that level of due diligence. I think they knew that it had an existing use permit, and obviously, at that time, they didn't know that it had to be replaced.
Okay, but the facts, that time you acquired the property, we haven't changed the compliance factors since the buyer of the property was acquired, knowing that against the current, just like the gentleman said, if you buy something and the code changes, whether it is an APZ or something else, we won't even let people improve their homes. So it's not, I think you made the extension that there was a property right we were taking, and I'm just trying to suggest that if you were the original owner, I'd be sympathetic, but when you're the buyer after the fact, you know, you're a willing buyer of all the risk and liabilities that go with that. Doesn't matter how I'm going to vote, but I'm just trying to make clear that it's not the case that you couldn't have been aware, or your client couldn't have been aware, of the full liabilities and constraints on their acquisitions.
What they weren't aware of at the time was that, one, they were going to have to replace the structure, and, two, that when they went to replace the structure, the portion of the ordinance that now says existing, which it's always said existing, it's always been a setback from existing structures, would be such that now you have existing structures where, when it was built originally, there were not. And just to clarify a point, if we look at this, as far as, this is approximately where the tower is, and you've got the easement that spans this area. Mr. Riddle lives on this property right here. Not here this evening are the owners of this property, this property, and this property. Oh, sorry. Mrs. Maggiore is here, although we do have an email. The other folks that you've heard from other than Mr. Riddle live on this side of the street. And I point this out because the tower meets setback to the homes on the other side of the street with the proposed, actually, as it exists now, and with the proposed relocation and redesign. I believe there's a house somewhere over here where the existing, yeah, I think you can, this one, I think, here, misses the setbacks for the current structure by just a few feet. So at the lower height, it meets that, actually exceeds that. So again, we're talking about the setback from the four homes that were built after the towers and that are the subject of multiple, in Mr. Riddle's case, two easements, and then the others, an easement that was put to record with their, the deeds to their homes.
I only have one other question.
Go ahead, please.
Look, I mean, I've tried to understand as best I can. I understand your lease agreements and all the things that you have, and probably the liquidated damages would go with that. If you built a smaller tower, you'd owe all those people payments, I would assume, because you consciously took the action of your own free will. But why is it that you feel that you're not willing to just operate that, leave the tower where it is? So what is the business proposition that's motivating the recapitalization of the tower rather than just leaving it in place and continuing to satisfy all your customers, which is an option that you have?
They could leave the tower in place, as we've discussed. The challenge with the structural modifications that were made by, in connection with the Verizon application to upgrade their equipment to 4G, and now everybody's going to 5G, was that when those modifications were made, when they went back to do the inspection, the engineers did not feel comfortable saying that, well, they knew the work wasn't done as it was designed, and they didn't feel comfortable about what structural capacity was left. So you have a twofold issue. One, they've got a tower that's there, that they really don't know what the structural capacity is, and certainly, that would prevent any future use of that and any future modifications. But they've got a structure that is, you know, over 30 years old, and it's aged, obviously, and the requirements have changed, and the technology has changed in such a way that it really is most prudent to replace it. And remember, you've got a wireless ordinance that requires colocation. It requires users to use structures that are there, to modify them if they need to, and not to go building towers all over the city.
Well, when this issue came up about the inference that the tower was structurally unsound, you know, I went back and went through the city engineers, because if it was truly structurally unsound, we would be having to cite it, we'd be telling you to take it down. And the assessment, the analysis, that the structure was not structurally unsound. But the nuance of the statement that you made was the structural capacity, which tells me that it's safe for the capacity that it has, but that your company would like to have more capacity to put additional things on the building, which then would take the existing structure beyond its structural design capacity. I believe that's the nuance of your statement. So which means that the new tower is in lots as much to do about growth capacity as it is about relocation. So maybe you could do a lower tower that's structurally sounder, have different capacity but may not generate net additional income stream over the current tower, but that's not my obligation as a council member. My obligation is to draw the codes. And so I'm just trying to understand the business aspect of this, and I think it's somewhat, I don't know if I'm getting the full picture, of the business case analysis relative to the land use issue that you project.
Well, and you have multiple issues. So you have a tower that, you're correct, is not suitable for additional colocation because they don't know what the structural capacity is. You've got users, including Sprint and others, everybody throughout the city, fortunately for all of us, if you're looking at high-speed internet and broadband, who are changing and modifying their wireless equipment on all of the towers around town in order to keep up with the increasing demand for data and the different types of use and all the things we now do with our cell phones. So you've got a challenge of the existing tenants wanting to modify their equipment. Their equipment and staff will tell you, instead of getting smaller and lighter, has gotten bigger and heavier. So in order to provide high-speed data and internet, the equipment is actually bigger and heavier than most of what was done even at the beginning of the launch in the mid to late '90s. So yes, you do have existing users, Sprint included, Verizon included, all of the wireless carriers who provide services to the folks in that particular section of the city want to be able to upgrade, to provide 4G, to provide the high-speed data, everything that everybody's looking for now. And the challenge, as you'll see in that Sprint letter, is if they can't modify and upgrade that equipment, not only is that site limited, but they can't really upgrade the sites around it either. So you end up with a situation where you would have a particular section of the city that doesn't have the same quality service and high-speed internet that you would have in other places. So that's one issue. But let's go back to the non-conformity. Section 105 of the zoning ordinance allows for the replacement and the relocation of a non-conforming structure. We have a valid conditional use permit for a tower. The ordinance provides that if the structure becomes non-conforming, that you can apply to city council to replace it and relocate it, provided that your proposal is less non-conforming than what's there now. So working within the confines of the ordinance and what's allowed in the non-conforming use section of the ordinance, we've really tried to make sure that what we came up with was less non-conforming and certainly further away, lower than what was there now. And we also have the opportunity to enhance the site and to do things about the existing sort of conditions on the ground.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Henley?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, I'm very sorry.
You go right ahead. Not at all.
Do you have sufficient land there to move the tower back to where the families, people want it?
So if you go back to the site land, this one should work. So this funny-shaped V, sort of a V, kind of a tripod, that's the confines of the existing easement. You've got the anchors here, here, and here. And so this is largely the land area for the tower. One of the, one of the many things and iterations that we looked into was, well, what can we do as far as this area back here? As you may recall, and I've got copies that I can hand out, we had a wetlands delineation done. Now, it wasn't blessed by the Corps of Engineers, but it was an environmental consultant went out and delineated. You've got a branch of the north landing here, the topography drops off, so as you can imagine, around this area, you've got wetlands, there's a small pocket of wetland here, and then you've got the existing sort of tree line that provides a nice buffer. Where we looked at possibly moving the tower or adjusting it, we'd have to clear a significant portion of trees. We had the wetlands issue to deal with. And then there's also the issue of if you move the tower, you know, more than a certain distance away from this equipment on the ground, then you've got to move all on the ground, then you've got to move all of the equipment on the ground. Quite frankly, what the easements that encumber the property enable the property owners to request the tower user to relocate the tower and to relocate the equipment at the property owner's cost. So part of what we're dealing with here is Mr. Riddle, notwithstanding the fact that he bought a house, or a lot and a house that's encumbered by this large easement area and the equipment in the tower, would like for you to require Crown to move the tower further away so that he can get back the use of his land, which is currently, as you can imagine, assessed much lower than, than it would be otherwise by virtue of the fact of the encumbrances in the tower, so.
So your, your problem with moving the tower further back is the fact that there's wetlands there, is that right?
Yes. There are environmental issues, you've got wetlands, and then additionally, you've got the situation where you would have to take all of this, compound all of the equipment and move all of it as well. So what we've tried to do is move the tower now as far as we can, staying within, again, this cleared area, so we're not clearing, having to clear a whole lot of trees, and also being within a certain distance of the equipment on the ground that runs the antennas.
Well, Barbara's been out, but Jim, you got something?
Well, I, just, just if I could, if you don't mind, Ms. Henley, I just, I wanted to ask a question based on something you just said about, so the property owners have the right to, to have the tower moved at their expense?
Under, under the existing easement, yep.
So it, I mean, and that's, that's essentially, they, they can tell you to do that, and, and under the terms, as long as they're willing to pay for it, it, it gets moved?
As long as it's a location that's suitable at their expense, yeah.
And it's not in wetlands, and, okay, I didn't realize that part, that's interesting. Thank you.
Barbara, Ms. Henley, excuse me.
It's been a long year, and I appreciate the, the time and, and effort that everybody involved has been, has put forth in this. And I think, I thought when we came away from the last meeting of the applicant and the neighbors, that we, we had essential agreement, that if they could just come down some and make some adjustment, that it would be acceptable, since they were going back to replacing with exactly the same tower that they have now. So since that time, they have come down, and they've also been able to move back. And I, I think the first proposal that we saw was going to replace it with a very large lattice-type tower, which was obtrusive, clearly, and it was also going to move it closer to some other houses than were there now. And so throughout all that discussion, you know, I kept hearing, well, it's okay, what it is there now, we're, we're okay with that. So it just seemed to me that there had to be a replacement, replacing it with exactly what's there now seemed to be about as close as they were able to get. I did come to appreciate the fact that we do have this co-location requirement, so that we would not have a proliferation of towers everywhere. And so the co-locating and the usage of this particular tower to the maximum extent is also at a city ordinance action. And I've also come to appreciate that this location is extremely important for the entire area around there to be able to, to get the services that folks demand these days. And I've come to appreciate the fact that we also have FCC requirements that we are required to, to follow. So ideally, it, it would be that the, the tower could be moved farther back, but I, I understand from the Corps that they don't go out and do these, these things, they're done by environmental consultants who then present their findings to the Corps. When that was being considered, I did hear from an adjoining property owner in the back that he wanted to perhaps develop his property, and he would not look favorably on, on the tower in that location. So we seem to have just a lot of issues, and trying to make absolutely everybody happy is, is just really not in the cards, I don't think. And so I think this proposal is about as close as we're going to do. It is a nonconforming structure, a nonconforming structure that becomes less nonconforming is allowed to, to continue. And I think when we see the, the service level of this need, we would be hard-pressed to say that it, it has to go away. It just is not going to happen. The original use permit allowed three towers, I believe there were two towers there. One of the towers was taken down a number of years ago. This temporary monopole will be there only for the time that the change is made. I think the easement agreement that is in effect is certainly legally binding on all parties, and I don't think that we have the ability to supersede that. And so with all of these things that are a, a part of, of all of this concern, I am going to move approval of this latest compromise application with the conditions that certainly include the fact, and what I heard probably as, as much as anything, is about the debris, and this will be cleaned up completely, and I will do a personal inspection. There was this issue of this thing that turned out to be an antenna that was brought up at the last meeting we had, and that has since been removed. And they have also agreed that you will not take advantage of, I believe, some new legislation which would allow you to increase the height later, and this is federal legislation, and that is this item five, that the height of the tower shall not be increased from 270 feet unless such increase is expressly approved by the City Council. We have to realize that, you know, federal legislation can trump local legislation, and you are agreeing that you will not take advantage of that.
Okay, we've got a motion to have a second.
Second.
In a second.
Can I ask for a friendly amendment on conditions, Ms. Henley, that they, I know, but that they quarterly inspect and clean that property, not just clean it the one time, but that they keep the pace policed? I mean, I think quarterly basis is sufficient, but I think that I would, if that, like I said, my line of questions did not telegraph my vote, but this is a very hard issue.
Well, item three says the compound and the surrounding areas shall be maintained free of debris. That means at the beginning and also in a continuing basis.
All times.
And quarterly will, if we can say, and inspected quarterly.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll call for the question. Thank you.
I voted 10 to 1. We approve the motion.
Okay, well, now go to item number three, United States Management, City of Virginia Beach. On this one, the applicant will have 10 minutes to speak, and then other speakers will have three minutes, and anyone representing the Civic League or an organization would be allowed 10 minutes as well. We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You'll be happy to know I'm not going to take 10 minutes.
You're right.
I'm Ann Crenshaw, a member of the Virginia Beach Office of, of the law firm Kaufman and Cannolz. I'm joined here today with, by Andrea Kilmer and Joe Geraldi, officers and representatives of the applicant. On December 9th, City Council approved a term sheet directing city staff to develop a comprehensive development agreement with the applicant. That process continues, and the issues that will be covered in that development agreement will be heard on another day. Tonight, we appear before you on two limited requests related to the Virginia Beach arena. Specifically, the applicant seeks a special exemption for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code for height, and an application for a major entertainment venue sign associated thereto. We appreciate the positive recommendations from the Planning Commission and the staff's unyielding help in, in continuing to, to move this forward. They have, they have been wonderful. We would ask that you favorably upon our application, and we welcome any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Clark.
Well, Barbara, you're back again. We're glad to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms and members of City Council. My name is Barbara Clark, and I live on 16th Street at the Oceanfront. I'm Secretary of the Resort Beach Civic League and have served on the Rack Transportation and Parking and Oceanfront Enhancement Committees for years, working to protect and improve the resort neighborhoods of Old Beach, Lakewood, and Pinewood. Tonight, I'm here before you to request that you please address the protection of these neighborhoods that was promised during Form-Based Code. On July 10th, 2012, Council adopted Form-Based Code along with Resort Area Parking Strategy Resolution, the first goal of which is to protect established residential neighborhoods by reducing or removing on-street parking pressures created by public beach use and the need for business employee parking. We are still waiting for this protection. Every city plan we read indicates healthy, vibrant, and strong neighborhoods are vital to establishing and maintaining a first-class, year-round resort, but we keep seeing more and more pressures and negative impacts without mitigation or improvements. Prior to moving forward with any new development or redevelopment that increases parking demands, please just do the right thing and protect our resort neighborhoods by implementing what was promised with Form-Based Code. Thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you for coming down.
Diana Burke.
We welcome you tonight.
Thanks so much. Happy Thanksgiving Day.
Thank you.
My statements are very, very brief. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Sessoms and City Council. My name is Diana Burke. I'm the Executive Director with the Virginia Beach Hotel Association. On behalf of our association, I would like to thank you, both city staff and council members, for your efforts and dedication in evaluating this opportunity. As stated previously, the arena project is our association's number-one priority, as it will add a vital component to our area. In 2013, we took a fact-finding trip to Greensboro, Raleigh, and Charlotte, North Carolina, and reviewed many of their venues. One of the essential elements we learned from that trip was the need for close proximity of the arena to the convention center. Walkability between facilities is key, thus the location of the proposed Virginia Beach Arena next door to the convention center is a must. In addition, the synergy, excuse me, with the hotel inventory infrastructure, which already exists at the Oceanfront and Town Center, allows for economic prosperity for all. As a stakeholder in the hospitality industry, we wholeheartedly recommend the continued support of the Virginia Beach Arena proposal. It will provide our guests and residents sporting and entertainment opportunities beyond compare. Lastly, I got this yesterday at the City Manager's Report, which was wonderful. Thank you, Jim. Just wanted to show you, tourism matters to locals. I think we all agree that that is true. The one statement I'm going to read, I promise I will not read everything on here, I can leave it if you'd like to review it later, I'm sure you know most of the data, but the one statement that I love says, "Tourism activity generates significant tax dollars to the city, which helps fund services like schools, police, fire departments, and road building." So here again, supporting the arena indirectly supports the city in so many vital ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
William Johnson.
We welcome you today, sir.
I'm here to offer my support for ESG and the arena people that's doing it. As a minority contractor, I've been dealing and contracting with ESG and Mike Delaudy since 1972, and-
You must have begun when you were a baby.
Pardon?
You began at a very young age.
Yes. And I've also done other work in the beach, particularly Pacific South, Ocean Side Economy, and my favorite was the Ocean Economy, and the water park for ESG. I've done practically most of all that work. They are very fair people to work for, and I enjoy working for them. I still consult them today as a contractor.
We thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Maston.
Barbara, we welcome you.
The Crown thing took up quite a bit of time. That was fascinating. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Attorneys. I'm here to oppose the special exception to the Form-Based Code so the city and their private partners for the entertainment education facility can put up three gigantic lighted signs to market and advertise events. This is discriminatory, selective enforcement of a brand-new city code. There is still no proof of funding for the developer from the Chinese banks. This is in the direct path of the non-stop F-18 Super Hornet jets. This location is barely one-quarter of a mile from the Mayfair Muse jet crash two years ago. There have been over 25 jet crashes, including fatalities of civilians from planes stationed at Oceana. Many of these pilots are right out of flight school, and they are practicing day-and-night flights. You admit this is only to fill hotel rooms in the winter. We have a convention center, Sandler Center, and the amphitheater. On January, January 26th, Jim Wood said the developer funding was not available. The city declined my FOIA request just a few weeks ago because the developer is not ready. Why give exception to a code if the deal is not finalized? I'm not 100% positive of these comments, so if you can wait and correct me if any of it's incorrect at the end. Wilcox Savage is the private outside law firm using air tax dollars on this project. I believe Jim Wood's son is an associate with Wilcox Savage. Jim Wood's mother is on planning. Jim Wood, in my opinion, should not be discussing or voting on this project. Do any members of this council body have financial interest or stock in any of the following companies? And will you ask for a legal ruling from the Commonwealth Attorney or the State Attorney General if your vote would present the potential for a conflict of interests? Some of these companies are Live Nation, Ballard Construction, Town Bank, Norfolk Southern, Wells Fargo, or Amada Hoffler. And I love sports. I was a sports photographer for many years. I don't oppose the arena, I oppose subsidizing it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
George Menz.
Mr. Menz, we welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to all ladies and gentlemen of council. I'm George Menz, representing the Sea-Tac community, the oldest community in the beach district. We oppose a premature approval of it tonight. Number one, so that's why we ask that you defer it until further study. The traffic impact studied by Kimmern Hall has certain questionable issues about it, one of whether that data is a decade old, it reflected 2005 data. All objections that has been filed by myself on behalf of Sea-Tac community, both in planning and with the petition for review, are re-raised now without going into details of them for the purpose of appeal. The one problem I have with approving this tonight is the way it came about. Number one, didn't even use the word "arena" in the agenda. And when citizens called the, the city, they were told that this is not about the arena, this is about signs for building that the city has not even entered into an agreement to build. But on the documents, the detail part, because y'all do your agendas in two parts, you've got the brief one that most of the public see, and then you've got the detail one that comes in your packet that you've got to go on the website to find. But then, when I found it at page 2,000, 205, the second page, only the first page was a map, the second page of it showed that it is about an arena. And it actually states, "The purpose of the request is to allow for construction of arena." So I don't know why the citizens would have been misled, and the second paragraph says about the signs. So the primary- So the primary purpose is here right before you now is the arena. I don't know how familiar you are, but I'm not an attorney. No, I'm not. But I do more than just listen to what folks tell me. I go check things myself. I think the code for ordinances is the same for mending ordinances, and it calls for it to be for public necessity. An arena is not a public necessity, surely, when you don't have all the research done on it yet. And if anything is approved, the value in that is that it gives them some kind of vested right to proceed. At least, that's my understanding. But I think it is very wrong for it to proceed based on misinformation. It has borne a plainly wrong. You have two basic dangers. If you have the power for public necessity, and one of your first duties is public health and safety, then obviously contrary to law would be public endangerment. Yes, you've got jet planes up there. I heard that it was discussed that the city has talked with the Navy and so forth. But consider this: the plane that we all know did crash. When the pilot walked out there and got in that plane that morning, he did not know that plane was going to crash. The Navy didn't know it was going to crash. Nobody in the city knew it was going to crash. We see it all the time where cars, something go wrong with them, and it kills people because there's nothing the driver in the car can do. Once that plane come up off that runway with a full tank of jet fuel, if that instrument panel, which is electronics, and we all know sometimes your computers act up, something go wrong to where the pilot in it can't do anything. You don't know where it's going to go down. And that's what makes this dangerous. It's an accident waiting to happen. You may be done already built it. I may be dead in my grave before one fall. But it don't take but one with a full tank of jet fuel to go through it? And you're going to pocket 15,000, 18,000 people in one spot with a jet plane coming down? I don't believe no reasonable council persons would do that. But I do believe that there are limitations on your power under 15.2. But I'll deal with that in another forum. And it has to do with public safety and keeping the environment around families and residents safe. The other problem is I question the validity of the statements that are on page five of their application, which says Virginia Beach Boulevard, 22,800 automobiles. We are concerned, Sea-Tac, we are concerned about being able to get to the hospital. Sea-Tac is on the south side of Virginia Beach Boulevard, I-264 Laskin. The hospital is on the other side. There's only one hospital down there. You don't have all day to get to a hospital when you have an emergency. But let me submit to you that a small car's about 15 feet, mid-size cars about, no, small car's 13, mid-size about 15, and a full-size vehicle is about 17. Take the middle one, 15 feet. Divide that into one mile, 5,280 feet. You can only get 300 and some vehicles in a one-mile, one lane. Two lanes, 700 and some. Four lanes, 1,400. So in one mile, from First Colonial Road to Park Avenue is only two miles. Now, think about the fact that First Colonial Road don't have no shoulders. Virginia Beach Boulevard don't have no shoulders. Bird Neck Road don't have no shoulders. And that's using the figure of mid-size cars. You can only get less than about 3,000 cars on Virginia Beach Boulevard before it is bumper-to-bumper gridlocked. And my point is that we have a high senior population in Sea-Tac. There's a high senior population in Croatan. Nobody wants their child, mother, father, aunt, uncle, cousin dying in the back of an ambulance because you had a chance to protect us and you didn't. On the expressway, when the ambulance and fire trucks got to come through, people got shoulders on both sides. They can pull over and make a space. You don't have that on those roads. So where you say on the record $52 million, that ain't counting all the improvement that you would have to make to make that area publicly safe. We have the right to uniform government. I think even the city attorney would agree. Citizens have the right to uniform government. We have the right to be safe and not to be endangered for something you knew or should have known. It is in a jet flight. In fact, you know, those of you that have been up here a long time, that convention center was never supposed to have been built there. The old city records show the convention center was supposed to have been built down at Pembroke Mall. But we got caught up in the same thing, where a few people wanted something greed, and they got their way. But the bottom line comes down to this: I don't think that your power is absolute. I don't think you can use that granted by the General Assembly to endanger us. Now, I don't know where that plane going to fall, but one thing for certain: we only have Virginia Beach Boulevard, I-264 Laskin, and we don't have but two ways to get across: Bird Neck, First Colonial. And it don't take a whole lot to block them roads up when you talk about putting 5,000 to 10,000 cars. And that traffic consultant that you paid, what, a million, $2 million, who says that here's a guy going to take his wife and girlfriend out on a date to the arena on a bicycle? I don't think so. That people going to come and pay $100, $200, whatever they pay to be in a hotel, that they going to walk from a hotel while on vacation in the colder winter to keep down traffic? Come on now. I mean, I know I'm old, but I wasn't born last Saturday. There comes a point when you have to stop. Now, I understand, and I'm going to go ahead and close, that you have probably made up your mind what you're going to do. The only thing is, you can kick some of the people some of the time. This particular time, it is threatening our seniors and whether we will be able to live safely in our homes. This has gone too far. We would ask that you defer it and get more solid data. It is too dangerous because the area is so small. It's not what I like. It's what an area can handle. It's only .3 miles wide, .7 miles long. I know those who may want it, but don't endanger everybody, including the people that come. And I guarantee you, if a plane hit it, we going to be stuck with a million-dollar place that ain't nobody coming back to.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Andrew Jackson.
We welcome you today, sir.
Mayor, City Council. I'm not going to be, I represent the leadership forum and group of people, just not the oceanfront, but throughout this city. I don't believe I've heard a whole lot of people say they don't want an arena. What I've heard them say is they don't want it there, or if it's there, they want it to be there safely. That's the issue. And I have read through, I don't know how many documents, and I see all the studies. I don't see a complete study that says this is. There's a lot of maybes and couldbe's and what ifs. And that's what you're voting on, because there's not a whole lot of concrete. The only concrete thing that I see is somebody wants it. Can have it, but have it safely. Now, I understand your Form-Based Code, and you understand the little things that you did there. You got some caps at 100, and I guess it was 110 feet before, and now comes the arena, and it doesn't fit in there. So now, we need an exception so we can go to 130, 135 feet. I understand that. Maybe some of the citizens don't really understand what this is about. They missed it because it didn't say "arena," but it didn't get under the radar with everybody. What I'm saying to you is, you've got to stop telling the citizens you don't care about them. You care about somebody else. You've got to stop that. That's not your job. That's not what we put you there for. Some of you I put there. That's not what we put you there. It's to care about. You owe this community trust. And when this community cannot trust you to do what's beneficial for them, why are you here? That's the question. Why are you here? What is it you're voting on, and for whose benefit? I've heard the mayor say, and I tend to agree with him some, this is the best city. The question now becomes, for whom? Certainly not everybody, and everybody's not safe. The issue for you now is, do you really have to vote on this or approve this right now? Or do you, due diligence-wise, sit back and say, "Let's take another look at it"? Do we have all the data? Have we talked? We've been asking for, and I'll hear people come up here and say, "We met." We've been asking for a meeting forever. There was a committee nobody even knew was there, but there was 54 people on it. I've never seen a committee of 54 people. Some of them didn't even know they were on it. And so, we say, "Sit down and talk to us." Well, if you don't have time to talk to the citizens, what are you here for? I know, I know, and I think I saw him in there, Mr. Frankenfeld. Emails back and forth. "I'm going to meet with this group. Meet with this group." He had a committee. "I'm going to meet with this group." "I'm going to..." Branch. "I'm going to meet with..." Meeting's canceled. Talk to the citizens. Why not talk to the citizens and hear their concerns before you decide we're going to vote on something? Because if that's true, then you're not voting for the benefit of the citizens. You're voting for the benefits of somebody else. Let's just tell the truth. And so, I will say to you in partying, you can vote on it. You can approve it. But what you sent to the citizens of this city is you basically told them to go where you know where. That's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Next speaker, please.
All speakers, your honor.
Mr. Arn.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make the motion that we approve item number three for United States Management with a special exception for alternative compliance under A and the request for the major venue signs at 17th Street under D.
Drive a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
No, no. Are you okay? I am a little uncomfortable, as I was when we voted for the term sheet, because, you know, I really don't like doing things piecemeal. But I do understand that sometimes we have to take certain actions along the way before we can get to the final stage. And this, I guess, is one of those things that the lender would require that we show that it has proper zoning to do this before they would proceed to the next point. I just want to make it very plain that until we get that final agreement, I am not firmly there yet, because there are a lot of things that have got to come to fruition in order to make this a done deal. And I think to some, it has sort of been portrayed as a done deal. So I do kind of agree a little bit that it sounds premature to approve this, but, as I said, it's just one of those things that, in order to get to that final thing, we perhaps have to give that indication. I believe when we had the community meeting in December, that with everybody, anybody who wanted to come could come and discuss the issues, and we sat at tables. I believe I was at the table with Barbara Clark and Mr. Menz, and I heard their concern about what would happen to their neighborhoods. And I share that concern, and I voiced that prior today on two different aspects. 17th Street is a pretty fragile area. It's at a point where it certainly does need redevelopment. And we saw the Vibe District proposal, which will be a way that private individuals will transition that area from 17th Street to 16th Street, or at least that half a block that's on 17th Street, in a fashion that we heard today, that the neighborhood is very excited about. I'm concerned about that area west of the Vibe District and down to Bird Neck that isn't covered by that, because we expect that area to redevelop. That's one of the pros of this whole project. And I want to make certain that it develops in a fashion that is compatible with these neighborhoods. And I think we definitely owe it to our stable neighborhoods to make sure that we see that happen. And we've got a strategic growth area plan for the oceanfront, which could give that assurance. But we have to give the commitment to the citizens that the strategic growth area plan means something to us and deserves our commitment. I think I addressed that in an issue earlier, too. Please be assured that I do see that as something that I am committed to. And one of the things that I'm going to look for in this final vote that we will take at some point on this arena is that we've got some plan that we are going to commit to that will protect these neighborhoods with the parking issues as well as the development the best we can. I understand that property owners have a right to do an enormous amount of development without having to come to the council, because they've got by right zoning. And we'll just have to commit that we're going to do our best to work along those lines. And so, it's with these qualifications that I will vote for this application.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Moss.
Well, I would ditto Barbara's remarks, and I think, would like to share with the public, the reason why we're not voting on something tonight is because this council as a whole has told the staff that these issues of neighborhood preservation, of traffic, and all these things have to be addressed before it comes back. And I think that's what the staff is doing. And that's why this is just about the sign. But I can assure you, and I think, I don't think there'd be a common agreement, we do care about neighborhoods, and that's why we're not voting tonight. And a local developer who lives in our community, just like we do, has a common purpose to come out with a win-win solution. And we know that preserving the neighborhoods is a top priority, and City Manager knows that. And I think we're going to be able to find a win-win. People shouldn't walk away or watching this thinking that we don't care, because that's just not true.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah, and thank you. And, you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for George Menz, my friend Andrew Jackson, and the community at large. And I think one of the things that when we undertook this initiative a while ago, you know, the first one was a huge public meeting where we had two applicants come side by side and present their projects to us, not only the council, but to the community, to the press at large and everything. And yes, there were a group of core members, but it was open to the public. And one of the things we took pride of is that anybody that came was allowed to submit questions, and, you know, we did things publicly online. We vetted it extremely well. And be assured that if there was a crash potential problem, the Navy would be against it. I would not be for this project. I don't think anybody in this council would be. You know, so the point of safety is a major concern anywhere in the city, especially when jets fly overhead. But the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, we had a very sobering presentation last week that the revenue growth in the city is only projected to be maybe 1.5% over the next couple of years. And yes, we have to pay for essential city services to keep the good schools and everything. And, you know, right now, in the city of Virginia Beach, you know, we are, don't have a lot of heavy industry. We don't have Microsoft here. We don't have a lot of industrial base. We have a lot of residents. And we have to find potential of revenue wherever we can find it. And everybody knows that, you know, I'm not a fan of a lot of the public privates, but this is one that really doesn't compete against any other entity. It's actually going to create some other type of venues. You know, we actually may get a convention hotel without the public participation that was asked for in the last one. It might stimulate growth of the corridor, where the folks in Centerville and Bayside, Kempsville will have a destination to come that would actually help the local economy sustain itself year-round. Now, one of the things I'm heartened by, and then I'll close comments, is that knowing that the applicants, you know, this is going to be an ongoing communication with the adjacent community. This is not just going to stop when they break ground, when they have their first event. It's going to be a work in progress. And I feel that, I think John Moss hit on it, these are local folks that live here that will live with, you know, the consequences and the blessings of this project. And, you know, once again, we're doing things incrementally. This is a new form of public-private venture where the applicant is assuming the burden of the risk. So yes, it's new to us, but hopefully, it's going to be the template for good things for the future, and I'm really encouraged. But I want to give assurances to the community. But I want to give assurances to the community that you are being listened to, and you will continue to be listened to.
Yeah, I agree also with the same because even as we have our closed sessions, we go back to the community. We go back to the traffic pattern. We go back to talking about the Baptist church, et cetera. So we're going to be very vigilant on making sure the community because one plus for the arena is new jobs for some of our youth in the area. And that is important. We want our youth to stay. We also want it to be safe. So that is something that we're looking at every step of the way. And we are constantly briefed, and we're questioned during the briefings about these things, especially for Sea-Tac, as one of the oldest communities. We value having them. And a lot of you know, wherever I have to speak, I mention that we have this historic community. So that's one of our prizes. And we want something that we can work together. And it can benefit not only the majority, but a lot of the young people. There are lots who are elder there, but we have a lot of young people. If you have been over to their Black History, you will see. And they're looking, and we want them to stay. We want them to grow. So I believe we can work together and listen. Very important. We are listening. We are taking things into consideration.
Any other questions or comments before we call for the question? Let's call for the question.
My vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application of United States Management in Sea of Virginia.
Counsel, we do have one appointment, which we didn't. I think you'll be comfortable with once he makes it. If you would, please. Mr. Rice, mayor.
Actually, it's three to comply with the CPMT ordinance that we passed earlier this evening.
Okay.
The required elected official or appointed official or designate of the city council, and that would be Bob Mathias, a representative of a private organization or association of providers for children's or family services. That would be Ginger Clover of the, I think I pronounced that right. I'm not sure. Of Tidewater Youth Services Commission. And apparent representative Kathy Love.
Here any other motions? Call for the question, please.
My vote of 11 to 0, you've appointed those persons.
Is there any unfinished business?
May I just make a comment? I see the folks from Metta Ridge are still here. The city attorney's office has already made the correction in the writing that this debris will be cleared by the applicant on a quarterly basis and made clear, and Mr. Moss wanted this to be absolutely clear. This item five, condition five, has the effect, as this resolution says, "The applicant has waived in writing any claims to entitlement to raise the height of the tower without the approval of the city council that may be otherwise allowed by regulations to the Federal Communications Commission to take effect in April 2015." And that's crucial because they would have the effect to raise the tower without coming to city council by this legislation. And they have waived that right. And so just to make sure that everyone is clear with that.
Very good.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Any new business? Adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.